Thank you all so very much for joining us tonight. The time is 7:09. Roll call please.
Simmons. Nelson.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Flagman.
Here.
Curtis.
Here.
Howie Lee.
Here.
Here and four of us present. First item on the agenda, our audience comments. We have first, we have one person who's signed up.
Hello, my name is Joni Bradley Scott and I am here as a parent. And I have been asked by several active parents to give a voice to a current situation that is causing some uneasiness and frustration. The district's job forces suggest that there are a few open positions for principals and that our most senior principals have one year of experience in exposure. Being a principal is a weak place and you're a lone island in your school. Due to the steep learning curve of joining a new school, a new system, a new district, a new staff, new parents, and new students, et cetera, some consistent onboarding and mentorship can help manage the uncharted territory. Our principals are assets and we should invest in their success because we all win when they compete. Therefore, I'd like the board to institute a principal mentorship program at all of our schools. Our past principals, our past practice with a different mentorship program in the district has indicated initial success. I believe in order for a school to become a dynamic learning organization, the principal needs to write tools for success. A new principal mentorship program is now required by half of the nation's safety. And I'm hoping the state of Illinois will longer fund the principal mentorship program and be considered into the best practice strategy, which was evident from their mandated program in 2013. Therefore, we are not doing business with wheels but asking that we maintain best practice strategy. In order to ensure the excellence we are striving toward, we must make sure that our principals receive the nurturing guidance and support of experienced mentors through board policy and practice. On behalf of many stakeholders, I am requesting that a principal mentoring program be placed as an agenda item on the April meeting of the whole meeting. This will allow time for programs to begin when the new principals begin their contract for July first. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
So, I have something to add.
Yes?
I mean, what was it that you had, was it AP? Was it AP program?
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't. It wasn't, it didn't have the, it did not have the specific title of a mentoring program, but it was certainly designed to be an apprenticeship type program. This is, um, so we will, we and Dr. Smith and his team will definitely take this. I mean, this is, um, in, in the, um, in, in the realm of what's possible in terms of requests that people come before us and ask. This is not a very difficult request, so, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Do we need more comment? What really, first off, question. So, we did the other, was that more so just as a school or were we doing it online? So, it's a feed into all the schools?
I'm trying to remember.
It was like almost four years ago.
Right, was it almost four years ago? So, it was designed so that, um, that person was floating between two schools. Right, to get direct mentor, mentoring from those two sitting principals who were long-term principals and very seasoned principals. That specific person has now moved into a principalship position. And so, the idea was really around sort of growing our own and creating a very strong bench of potential, um, teachers who could become APs, who could become principals one day. But I completely agree that mentoring is crucial. And at that particular moment, I mean, we had, I'm not sure how long Pat had been in the district this period, but, you know, we had some seasoned principals in the district. And so, we have to think through what a potential mentoring program would look like now, given the tenure of our current principal.
It was probably less formal than a specific mentoring program where, you know, in the last, certainly in the last six years, we know that, um, you know, principals had really worked with each other and used each other as resources and support as well as, you know, reaching vertically and then in both directions to build that support network. It is, the conversation we've had over the last four years specifically about really developing that pipeline and that support network is, perhaps you're right, it is, um, it is something that we want to support. But there's a difference between a formalized program and a, um, a program that we kind of develop while something they call building the pipeline. Two different programs.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, need recognition.
Just wanted to take a moment to recognize the life and career of Mardell Parker. Recently passed away in Florida. Remember, he had a 30-year career here that started at Lovewood School and it finished at Flossmore Junior High, which was named after Mardell when he retired in 1985. So, again, just a real long career in District 161. Don't hear about that as often. So, just something to take a moment to recognize, especially in this case.
Next item, Parker's eighth grade girls volleyball team.
Absolutely, welcome to the volleyball team. Oh, she won't come up. Sorry, Coach. Sorry, seven, eight, twelve. They had a great year. They went, she guys went 20 and, uh, 17, 18, 18 and 3, something like that. They did a great job. It was funny, mate, when I knew it was up here, but oh, they were okay. They were very nice girls. And I thought, I thought, you know, maybe if we could get to regional finals, that'd be a really good thing. So, at tryouts, he's like, hey, coach, they're state. So, you think so? He's like, I'm State. So, we got, they played well, they never beat Dinkar at all last year. First game, just do bad, so, okay, they played solo. And they got better and better and better. They actually didn't listen for a while and, you know, the guys still listen, yeah. And they did a great job, I'm so proud of them. They played so hard, played well, they played together, uh, they picked some good teams. So, it was awesome job and they are amazing too. I look forward to watching them high school, each and every one of them. Of course, the ones that want to marry and it's okay. But we do have certificates for everybody, both. Okay, Michael Andrews coming up. Mary Holland. Amelia Long. Elizabeth from there. Madison Jones. Ella Seves. Ella Stoltz. Kees Fain. All of the coaches in there. More to the side, girls coming over. One, two, three. One more, one, two. There it goes. There were some young ladies who could not make it tonight. We'll recognize them publicly and we'll send their certificates to the school. Margaret Doan. Haley Trojan. Chandra Ozo. Jane Erppler. Avery Redosta. Elia Hopsin. Kamira Curales. And Samantha Gordon. All right, our next recognition, uh, tonight is our staff recognition. And Jennifer Howler is being recognized as being the always going to love the call of duty to meet the needs of all students and families at Serena Hills School. Uh, she has an exceptional work ethic and does a large amount of community outreach to support Serena Hills families. District 161 is incredibly fortunate to have her as part of not only the Serena Hills community, but the larger district overall. And welcome, Jennifer.
And the next item we have on our agenda is board member recognition. We sadly have two board members who will be, this is your second to the last. Well, hold on, you thought this was a big quick meeting, then we draw this down. Um, one of our board members who will be, um, Lydia Sis is not here today, so we will honor him in a couple of weeks when we come back together. But, um, Steve has, in Steve's own way, has a very special part.
There's no song involved. I will, I will stand for this. So, I have to say that, you know, I really judge people on their character as well as, you know, another level, like what, to what degree have they been impacted in our lives. You know, try not to get choked over when I say this. Uh, and I have to say that I don't think I have met anybody anywhere, let alone the district, and I love my district, I think this is the best of the best, that I maybe admire more than Merle Hopp. I think that when you think of somebody that you want next to you, when you need to get something done, you want Merle Hopp. And when you, uh, you know, really look at the impact, uh, the change of our community, I, I say this without reservation, we would not be as successful as we are today, nowhere near as successful, if it was not for Merle Hopp being serving on this very board. And I end with a story that I think really sums that up in terms of somebody with real character and working well with Ritz, which is what we want all our kids to have, and she exemplifies that fantastically. But I remember, I really met Merle at, um, just before the election, when she cycled in, uh, and, four years ago, when, um, I was, I was asked to do, you know, this little progress page, you know, at the Illinois Association of Schools or, you know, I wasn't like being a new board member. And, uh, and that's when I met Merle. And, and I realized by the end of the night, you know, when she really stayed and she paid attention, she took notes for all the, um, to all the workshops, that here's the person that's really committed. And I was, I was really happy about that. Um, because I, I was also very pleased with the other board members. I thought, wow, we cannot go wrong, you know, and, and I think that Merle's gonna win. But at the end of the night, I was positive that she was gonna win, and sure enough, she did. Um, and I have, I have really appreciated the fact that she, you know, really gave it all and she stuck it out for our community. Um, and at, at every turn, she was always there with me when I needed her. Uh, and she has disagreed with me on so many things and she has not been shy at all about finding where I was wrong, uh, even when I was convinced that I was right. But, uh, I will tell you one anecdote, which I think really sums up the depth of her character. And that is, uh, several years ago, this is right when she became a board member, uh, she had hurt her phone, hurt her legs, and just in a really bad, painful way. And... Oh, yeah, it was, yeah, broken three places. It was, uh, don't ever go to those places again.
Don't worry, I don't skate anymore.
That's right. Stay away from those places. But, um, she wielded, you know, like a beautiful board member, and she sat through the entire board meeting. And it was a long meeting. And, and it was a really long executive session. And we tried to get in and out, you know, get things done, but every once in a while, we had a really long line. She stuck it out. Loved the past, her pain medication wore off, and she was in agony next to me. And no, she was not flinching, she was not going to leave that room until we resolved the issue. And, you know, somebody like that, that is exactly who you want your kids to be represented by in, in any venue, especially this school board. And I thank you, Merle, that made me a better person as well as a board member. And I think that, uh, we owe you a debt of gratitude for four years of being here. Thank you very much, my friend, and I love you.
Thank you so much, Steve. One thing that I want to say is, um, serving four years, it seems like it just went by. We started off on this board, it was a very dysfunctional board. And then we, um, we got new leadership as well as we got new board members. And I think it's a testament to when, like you said, we can agree to disagree. But when you have a more functional board, you can move ahead and be more pervasive in everything that you do. Uh, I have enjoyed serving, um, and making a difference. Uh, one thing is, last March was really tough for me when I found out I was, I had breast cancer. And I was really getting ready to give up everything because this was, you know, that's, that's a fight. And when you get that diagnosis, um, if anybody's ever had it, then understand what I'm speaking of. But if you've ever had something like that happen, your whole life goes before you. And I remember when I first started taking chemo, um, you know, I was just sitting thinking about all the things that I was getting ready to pull myself out of. And, you know, a voice spoke to me so clearly and said to me, "If you continue to go and stay in the place of where I've appointed you to go and serve a cause greater than yourself, then I'm gonna heal you for doing this." And I am glad to report a week ago, uh, after my doctors, after going through a lot of you I didn't know, and it wasn't a thing that I was trying to hide, I think I was trying to process it. But I wanted my daughters, I wanted people to see that no matter what challenges come your way, that you have to be able to push for and press for. And the biggest thing is, when you can serve a cause greater than yourself, whatever that cause is for you. For me, it was advocating for the children of 161. And I will continue to advocate in this community for any issue that needs a voice. And so, I thought it was really a huge thing to go through 12 months of chemotherapy, 12 months, not total of radiation, I went through a total month of radiation. It's a really tough thing and then to have to come here. But I felt so good about what I was doing and I wanted to be able to show people, whether it was my daughters or whether it was you, whether whomever it was, that you have to push through no matter what you are going through. People are depending on you. I thought that people elected me to this position, they couldn't care less, you know, what it was I was going through. You need to be here for the votes, you need to be here for the agenda, you need to be here from beginning to end. And I just thank God that he's done that. I thank God that I've had board members that I remember when it was time, coming up to the time of, um, getting the petitions together. And I had the majority of you came and said, you know, are you gonna run again for 161? And I said, you know, I, I don't know. And I was really torn about whether to stay or whether to go, because I knew we needed to make that link to 233. I knew because of all the things that we've been through here, coming down with the fortune of the graduate. And the majority of you said, I'll carry the petitions for you, we need you, carry them, I'll carry them. And that's a real testament, and it showed me that we made a difference together. And for that, I thank you all.
Sure.
No, I like it.
And now we're there.
With your legs.
I'm looking, I believe Dana wants to get over this. Yeah.
It's not hard.
Not, is it? Thank you so much. And, oh, we have a plan. Appreciation for your big hours of dedicated service to Flossmore, to District 161. Board recognition, thanks so much.
There's only one girl.
That's it. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Um, so, like I said, we will definitely recognize John Simmons next week, uh, not next week, uh, in a couple of weeks. I think it's three weeks.
Very important.
Yes, three weeks from now. Um, but, you know, Merle, I think we all echo what Steve said. And, um, I'm sure, I mean, I have a team to talk to all the time, but you'll be right over there this time next month. Um, but just, you know, we...
Want some really nice things, nice things.
You can just pop in. Yeah, you can pop in. Um, but we do, we are so much better because you have been a part of this journey for all of us. And so, you know, this is a start for you. And we know there are, there's so much more in store for you and you've got to go on and you've got to do it. Um, but we are so much better because you've been a part of this. And our kids are better, our students are better. So, there is no doubt, um, about your commitment to this district. So, we know that you will continue to support us, to challenge us, to ask those questions. Just, you know, raise your hand when you're listening. We will, we will expect all of that, um, from you because, you know, as Dr. Smith just said, there's only one girl. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Dana, you talked this with your superintendent for tort things.
No.
What was next on the agenda?
Next, uh, two years, we'll, we'll have to swap that, that word. But certainly, you know, obviously recognizing, you know, the accomplishments of Misses Hopper, her contribution to the board, to the children of District 161, not only to the staff members as well, so they will thank you. Uh, this was the official kickoff for the Illinois Assessment of Regulus in District 161. Last week, there were pep rallies and security and crazy sock days and all these, you know, great things they did for to get the students excited and generate some motivation for the assessments. We still have a number of tough testing sessions ahead. So, we are providing snacks, we're providing breaks to the kids to help them make it through. We've really been focusing on those learning standards. This is a great opportunity for those children to demonstrate just how much they've grown over the last year. And I'm hopeful that the turnaround on the assessment data will be much faster this year. I'm hopeful, I was also hopeful last year. But this is a new hope and a new state superintendent and a new program to see how that goes. The equity, the last piece is that the Equity Closure Committee meets on Wednesday, April 10th, at 6 o'clock to continue our work on the equity framework. At our last meeting, we started fleshing out a number of those different pieces for our equity lines for decision-making. I had a meeting with several students from Parker and Market to have input on some key sections of the Parker Handbook. That's one thing to identify right away at that committee, because we want to get some student input, um, on that wording. So, we'll bring that back, that onto the committee, but turn it to the board and we'll make those changes for the 1920s clear. And to the board.
Any questions or comments? Amy and Dana, committee report.
Yes, Amy and Ken, we're on the website. We are narrowing down our options. We will bring those to our next board meeting. But it's basically between two different templates for the website. We already have a draft mock-up of the individual app that will run the website as well. Try to make sure that the website is ADE compliant, which is a big piece right now, which we'll really focus on. And having a clean, precise place where parents can go to find the most important information. So, we did talk a little bit, get some parent feedback just on some menus and how those can be organized in our last meeting. And we'll bring those to the board in a joint.
Questions or comments? I know one of the things we had talked about briefly was, um, the idea of an end of the year celebration. We, you know, we started doing the, um, Bridgette has left, right? So, we started doing the beginning, um, the back-to-school celebration in partnership with the Village of Flossmore. And so, you know, we thought it would be a great idea to do an end-of-the-year celebration as well. So, hopefully, that's something that the community, the committee, or someone...
Uh, the engagement committee, we're concerned about the volume of end-of-the-year activities in general. And in order to swap, in a district, one, they would like some school events to come off the hook. So, right, a little bit more work to do with that. But I was able to speak with some District PCL members, who actually would be able to take care of the financial side, and be able to take care of this sweat equity. So I don't have any time for those conversations.
Okay. And it doesn't have to be anything, you know, but just a few mascots, and, you know, a little Tupperware, and some ice cream, and, you know, Steve says something like that, but I did not. But, but something, I mean, I think the goal is that we want students and teachers and the community to leave the school year feeling as good as they did when they came in. District Leadership Team.
So on April 23rd, Camelbell, myself, Evita McNeil, we're heading out to the Athletic Trip, or Athletic Trip 102. It is Buffalo Grove, lead them to Stevenson High School. And they are on the front lines of the Portrait Graduate movement. Ed Baker 21 is currently behind that. And we will be going up there to have Launch 10K, the CEO of kind of the think tank behind Portrait Graduate, will be there, talking us through Launch and all that, not to receive an action, and the types of decisions that are made when you make an event to your children, and what that sort of like construction. We'll bring that back to our District Leadership Team, because we're starting to lay out the different pieces and what those commitments are. But we're already seeing the hurdle of, okay, every kid should be able to collaborate, communicate, you know, with high levels of critical thinking. But it's great to say that, wins and means to do that. So we'll bring back some information to our District Leadership Team meeting, but we'll be heading out to Buffalo Grove, and you will talk to them.
Any questions or comments?
I have one question. So as part of, I want to make sure I understand all the pieces, and I kind of remember a little bit. So I want to also make sure that this point is where I think it's tied to what our kids just said, moving over to HFL, we are certainly that time, and that is it.
Yes.
Okay, that's my thought, okay.
If I may, there's one item I want to add to your superintendent's report, which you didn't mention, which was that our proposal for a tri-conference?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
We submitted three proposals, right? And I think at least two of them were submitted, right?
We did, we did three. There was one on data usage, there was one on shared services between school districts and municipalities. And then there was a third one on, you know, onboarding new superintendents and rebuilding after a challenging break. And that's the one that is...
The one they...
So over the next couple of months, we'll put that together, but we'll do that presentation, we'll have the data, but at the tri-conference downtown Chicago in a moment.
Any questions or comments? Then we're on to item number seven, which includes two conservative items. We have a motion, please, to approve the regular Board of Ed meeting on March 11, 2019, and the Special Board of Ed meeting on March 18, and the foyer request as presented. So moved. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Great.
Yes.
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Corrigan?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item on asbestos abatement.
So we've gone out for bid on the asbestos abatement for the room. Right there. It's smaller than this room, but it's pretty, just a simple one-room. We did get three quotes, ranging from $27,800 to $32,800. And all things considered, it came in about $3,000 less than we had originally estimated it would be. And the winner is HEPA, and they are also the company that has done all the asbestos abatement around the district over the last several years. So again, they can pay any minutes, that's a little bit better. We've cleared out this agenda to have a conversation now, so we can approve it at the next meeting, because they're already filling up their schedules for this, and we want to get on their schedules as quickly as possible. Questions?
Any questions or comments?
Will that conclude the asbestos?
In this building, no.
No.
No. No, unfortunately, there is still asbestos running hallway down this way, and the whole area in the front, from the foyer down into the technology department at the end of this wing over here, is still all asbestos.
So is asbestos just taken in parts, or...
The issue is the things that are in the spaces are there, and then trying to find a good time to do it. So, for example, we're about to get inundated with Chromebooks and everything else. And so, to tear apart the whole technology department would be a nightmare. I think we would like to do that in the timeframe when we have someone, one of those years where there's no purchase of those things going on during the summer. So we really have to time it. That room, that we're going to be abating, we just completely, it was chock-full of a whole lot of asbestos. We just finished cleaning out the entire room. We often use this building and have preschool screenings going on all over the place. That's a really nice place to contain it and just have it really set up for preschool screenings that go on all year long. So the floors are kind of a nasty condition, so to pull it up, bait the floor, and then put that whole slate back together again, so that it's really usable, it's kind of a nice time to do that. But the rest of the building here, we're just going to kind of keep smelling this building.
So the thoughts, when you're in a shape, you've thought about this, there's probably no methods besides the way you're saying. So when you're getting proposals, is anybody going to talk about getting proposals, or all you need to do is stay tuned, or you're just doing it based on how you're...
Right now, we're just kind of doing it as, I mean, right now, all the rest of the asbestos is encapsulated.
Okay.
And there's no hurry to get it done. And we're just kind of doing it as we, you know, renovate or do some work on the individual pieces of the building, as opposed to ripping everything out. It's really not 100% necessary at this moment.
Any more questions? We're going to move to item nine, our action items. Miss Huckabee's going to go out with a bang. And the bills are submitted for approval by the Board of Ed. Eva Long, if Huckabee was asked one last time to review bills for the month of April?
What a gift.
It happened, and she...
I can't believe this.
Prior to the meeting, hopefully, you sent Fran like 20 questions.
No, I did not. Actually, Fran, keep going here. I began to look at this on Friday through Sunday. I actually did it at first, and she came, and she said something about the bills. I'm sorry. But the bills, I did have an opportunity to review them for the month of April. And I'm going to make a motion that we approve the bills in the amount of $734,216.77. That's for sure.
Second.
Any questions?
Roll call, please. Correitas?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Corrigan?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Kind of a motion, please, to approve payroll in the amount of $1,543,443.46 for the month of March. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Correitas?
Yes.
Corrigan?
Yes, and the motion is passed. I'd like to pull a little personnel, because I have questions for the exec session. A little comment for that. We have a motion, please, to approve the second reading of revised policy 420.
Two moves.
Second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Graves?
Yes.
Huckabee? Oh, wait, wait, I do have a question, please. I do have a question. I do have one quick question. It'll be a comment or something. Part of this fund balance, I think, had to do with, if I remember correctly, going through all of those bills, I'm telling you. Putting, I think it was $2.8 million away for the pension cost shift. $2.6, I'm sorry, $2.6. So this is the question that I just, it's really more so a comment. I met with Will Davis about, it's probably been about four or five weeks ago. And I asked that particular question about what the governor was going to do. I just kind of wanted to know, are we kind of staying in touch with the legislators on this? Because I know, he told me at that particular time that the governor was not thinking of doing this pension cost shift. Now, what that may look like next year, we might, you know, so it's always good to say, but this kind of thing, but I think what's more important here, I know, he was talking more so about the capital and retire going back from 3% to 6%. That's what they were really kind of looking at. So I just get to make sure that we're going forward, that we really are. Maybe we can, you know, stay a little bit more closer in touch and find out what's going on. Because we've got a different governor, hopefully a different thing. And I know that he did say that Governor Pritzer was going to, his idea was to infuse more money into education. I feel like it can change, it didn't even stay.
So for me, at least, thinking about this from just a financial perspective, the issue with all of that is, we still have a fixed problem.
Yep.
So we moved from 3% back to a 6% cap, that's just increasing the pension.
Right.
You know, requirement. And then we talk about infusing more money into education, which don't get me wrong, I absolutely am all for. But we still haven't solved the pension problem. We still have a significant, unprecedented liability. And no one has come up with a response as to how we're going to fund that. Every time I speak, we speak to legislators and our lobbyists and so on, it's okay, it's not on the front burner, but it's not off the stove either. So until someone removes it completely from the stove, I'm going to be plant supportive.
No, I mean, that's a good idea. And always it's good to say more, right, and then of course, we end up getting caught up with the retirees and the capital's back, and you end up having to pay. You know, having money to navigate along is always good, so. Just asking that question, so, yeah, let's continue to go.
Graves?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Correitas?
Yes.
Corrigan?
Yes, and the motion is passed. We have a motion to approve the school fees for the 2019-2020 school year with no increase over the 2018-2019 year.
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Correitas?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Corrigan?
Yes, and the motion is passed. We have a motion to approve the purchase of the frontline apps and management software at a cost of $12,000 per year, and the annual renewal fee of a cost of $7,000 per year.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Graves?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Correitas?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Corrigan?
Yes, and the motion is passed. We have a motion to approve the second reading of revised policy 280. So moved. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Correitas?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Corrigan?
Yes, and the motion is passed. And now, a motion, please, to move into executive session to discuss matters relating to personnel by ILDS. Any second?
Second.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We should be in exec session for another 20 minutes. Please, will free to grab whatever light on the table. There's only one other action item that we have to move, and that was to call the regular Board of Ed meeting back into session, time is 8:44. Roll call, please.
Graves?
Here.
Correitas?
Here.
Huckabee?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Simmons? Blackman?
Here.
Corrigan?
Here, and of course, present, I need, may I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented, please?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Correitas?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Corrigan?
Yes, and the motion is passed. I need a motion to adjourn the regular Board meeting at 8:44 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All the favors say aye.
All aye.
All opposed, say nay. Meeting is adjourned, it's 8:44.